We want to thank each one that has come and a lot of events is here, I know, for what's on the agenda. And we'll be getting down to it. If we all look like we've got the blown look, we've been over yonder digging for the DSS building. And when about took us away.
Told us May first, I remember.
Hello, the little white performance turned on.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. We'll do our invocation and Tim, would you lead us?
I will. Lord, thank you for this day and all your many blessings. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to come out and conduct county business. Lord, may our decisions reflect your guidance, Lord, and just be with us as we go through this meeting. We make the decisions that are best for the taxpayers of every county. Be with those that are lost, Lord, be with those that are sick in Christ's name. Amen.
If you would, as I stand, then we're going to do our pledge to the God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll move right along to three point two. Proclamations and awards, if we have anything for them.
We only have one item for that agenda item, and it's happy birthday to Ms. Martha James Hicks. Thirty-nine years old is what I heard.
Yeah, maybe twenty-nine. But I've got too many classmates in here, one teacher in here that knows that's kind of a field. But I thank God for every day I have, and I live it like it might be my last day because we don't none know when it'll be. We lost a great classmate, Mary Cherry, and her mother taught school there. It's getting down the line, but I'm gonna hold on to every day I can. All right. Public comments. Do we have anyone that wants to speak in public comment? All right.
If you, hang on just a second, if you will read the public comment, is it, you might have, it should be right there.
I've got one somewhere.
Yeah, it should be right there.
All right. Here's the way that the public comments go. The time limit for any comment to the board is three minutes. Board members are not expected to comment or take any action on matters during the public comment. Any individual speaking during public comments should address the entire board. Any person who willfully interrupts, disrupts the session will be asked to leave the meeting. If you would like to speak to an agenda item, you must sign up on the sheet with our clerk. Time limit to speak to agenda item is also three minutes. Please silence all cell phones and electric devices. Thank you. All right. Public comments. You come to the podium, please.
My name is Ann Wilson Castro, well, Wilson, from Avery, my daddy's from Avery County with Stedlin Red Wilson over at Rory Creek and all, and he had a Red Wilson event recently, and I wanted to thank the Historical Society for being a part of it here. He was a Naveri County person all of his life, and he loved Avery County, Pecilin. Thank you all so much for being a part of this wonderful county and for being part of my heritage. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Not, we'll move right along with our meeting, board appointments. We have a community child protection thing, local child facility prevention thing. We need to appoint these today.
Right, so attached are the applications for appointment to those two, to those boards. So we just asked for a vote. It's Mike Edmiston and Mark Sharp.
Move through.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, the likewise. All right. Board appointment, Economic Development Committee.
So attached are applications for appointment. These have been reviewed as of last month, and there are three positions open, and we have three applications. Those are Clayton Harpoel, Dave Smith, and Ken Walker.
Move through.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right. I'm gonna say to Clifton and his wife how much I appreciate them. I don't know how many boards they're on, but they, about every time we go to something, they're on the board. And I really appreciate your time, and I want to thank you and everyone else that goes on boards. That's what it's all about. If you learn about Avery County, it's going on the boards, and I learned that right after I came in this commission. If I wanted to know anything, I had to go on the boards. All right. We'll move right along. We've got an application to review for the Morris Library Board, Social Services Board, and the Planning Board.
So these are for your review, and we will take these up at our next regular scheduled meeting. There are two positions open for the Morrison Library Board, two positions open for the Social Service Board, and three positions open for the Planning Board. And those applicants are Clayton Harpoel for the Library Board, Ruth Shirley for the Library Board, Alyssa Callaway for the DSS Board, Deborah Gregg for the DSS Board, Tim Phillips for the DSS Board, Woodhaw Young Jr. for the DSS Board, Bradley Calhoun for the Planning Board, and Jason Grunstaff for the Planning Board. So those are for review, and we will vote on those at our next meeting.
All right. Thank you, Phillip. We'll move right along to three point three A, Avery County Historical Association. All right, who wants?
Sorry, I didn't interrupt you, but there might be some other people that wants to speak on this. So if they do, and it's an agenda item, they need to sign up on this sheet. So if there's anyone that wants to speak.
Can you put my name down? I may want to.
Okay.
You'll put it down for me, I appreciate it.
Has everybody else signed up that wants to speak? Jack, you're good. Okay. Anybody else? All right.
All right, but these were, we were never saying some.
Thank you for being here.
I have a time limit. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners for what they do to support the Avery County Historical Society. We have a space to operate out of because of your support, and we certainly appreciate that. And I want to talk about the fact that the Historical Society was founded in nineteen seventy-four before the Bicentennial Commission to preserve the history of our county. And those folks that went before us, they spent a lot of long hours getting, putting together information and getting us off the ground, and if we wouldn't probably be here if it hadn't been for those good folks. There's, you know, I'm sure y'all know someone, and I think this is one that used to be on the board. He's one of the people, and Jimmy, she used to be on the board, and she's our local historian. Right now, I know you are in receipt of a letter that I wrote about the history of the Andrew Kears Building, and I want to thank y'all for letting us have this, you know, be able to talk about this because it is definitely worth preserving. There are so many things that went on there in the past. One thing I was not aware of is that it was an American Legion building to begin with, and it was built by the National Youth Administration. And I'm showing y'all, this is really neat little poster from that time of a young person carrying some books because later it housed the library for the first time in like nineteen forty-five. It's probably when it got started, but the commissioners appropriated some funds for it in nineteen forty-two, and the library was housed there until nineteen fifty-six, when it was moved to a building close to the courthouse then. And then other ways that it was used, you see those listed there, the Women's Club was in there, and I thought that was interesting. And there were so many community activities during, that it was used for, I had my neighbor, I just stopped, you know, because I met him on the road, and he said, well, I did work study there when I was a student at Apple Action. And I said, really? So there's just lots of reasons to preserve the architecture plus the history. And so I believe that it's worth the consideration if we can get the money. And I have written letters to our representative and to our senator requesting some funds for that because I know it will take a lot to put it back into a place where it can be used. So I thank you for your time. Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Come to the podium, please.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, Madam Clerk, my name's Jack Thompson. I'm the Western Regional Director for Preservation North Carolina, Avery County native. I now live down in Huntersville, don't hold it against me. Before we get started, I do want to meet up with your Economic Development Board because a lot of what we do in historic preservation, saving old buildings, is economic development. You look at places like Hampton Store, Delk Park School, it's turned into housing. What's going on with Benner Elk School, what maybe could even happen at Bold Cranberry School. That's all economic development, how we can turn some of this stuff around to save the history of Avery County. We mentioned the Bicentennial Commission during that time, nineteen seventy-six period. The county worked hard to do a lot of genealogy. Ms. Jessie Gregg, y'all might remember Ms. Jessie. She was part of that commission, I believe, and the county did what's called an architectural survey. Not a survey like you go out and you put corners down around a lot, but a survey to survey the field. What is historic in Avery County and what's important and what should be preserved. Ladies and gentlemen, you go through that survey today, and I defy you to find one page that doesn't have a missing building, something that's been lost, out of a countywide survey. What's gonna happen three years from now, twenty twenty-six, a special year, does anybody know?
I can't say the word.
I can't say the word either, it's the two fifty, right? It's time to do that again, it's time for Avery County to step up and start recognizing some more of its historic architecture and turn that stuff into places we can be proud of. I've got a few slides to talk about what we do at Preservation North Carolina, specific to y'all's work and your ownership of this building. It's our surplus government properties program. Essentially, for folks in the audience, the jurisdiction owns the building. For a jurisdiction that owns a building, if they are the dispose of a piece of property, let's say a real property, they can do it in a couple of different methods, one of which is they advertise for bids. This is a public open forum, highest bid gets it, there's an upset bidding process. Very first step is that the jurisdiction has to actually declare the property surplus. We don't want it anymore, it's surplus. So they can bid it out to the public, anytime they can hear, you don't know who's gonna buy it, you don't know what's gonna happen to it. There's a state law that allows for them to enter into private negotiations with the historic preservation organization, and that's us right here. We could enter into a private negotiation with the county for the sale of the building. I'll click through here if this thing will work for me. How about I turn it on? All right. So often, the best use of historic buildings is for its original purpose, but often buildings have to be adaptively reused. This is a nurse's dormitory down at the VA. For any veterans that go to Asheville for service, this has been turned into offices now. Surplus government property, in seventy-nine, the General Assembly passed a bill that allows y'all to sell surplus properties to nonprofit preservation organizations at a negotiated price instead of going through the bidding process. Since then, at least thirty historic properties have been purchased and resold by PNC. This is an old slide, we're probably up closer to forty by now, we just did three down in Lincoln County. This results in about fifty million dollars of historic rehabilitation expense statewide. Nothing to sneeze at. General Statute one sixty-eight, two sixty-six, this outlines the process for a private negotiated sale that a jurisdiction can enter into. In broad strokes, I've already described it to you, it has been codified in law, and it is certainly an option that's available to you as a commission, as a board. Some examples of what's happened across the state, over in Raleigh, we took a water treatment plant. Well, what on God's green earth are you gonna do with a water treatment plant? You gotta turn it into a special event facility, you gotta turn it into housing. Libraries, we've taken libraries, various places, this is in Durham. Adaptively reused for law offices. Lawyers love historic houses and historic properties. They, you know, it makes them feel important, makes their clients, you know, feel like they're getting what they're paid for when they walk into some big fancy historic place. Turned into housing. Henderson, another library, city halls, we've even done. Here's old Sanford City Hall before and after. Rutherford Town Hall. Housing. How about the old hotel in Sanford, owned by the city? Folks, we're not scared of moldy, lead-filled, asbestos-laced buildings. You heard me say it last time, and you think I'm joking. This is what we deal with. We are the animal shelter of historic places. We deal with the flea-bitten mangy dogs, and we turn them back into something that a community can be proud of. There's your after. Post office in Rocky Mountain. How about hospitals? Here's one in Henderson, one in Wilmington. We've also done one in Gastonia, and we've also done one in Lincoln. School buildings. Here's one in Mount Olive, the high school. Here's the before. How you like that roof? It's turned into affordable community housing. I'll go through here as quick as I can. Schoolhouse in Agenton turned into affordable housing as well. There's one in Gastonia, it's now charter school, I believe, or central elementary, I think it's been converted to a charter school. Once unneeded and unwanted, unneeded, unwanted. We were looking at demolition of this building, were we not? These surplus public properties, once again, can serve their communities in a variety of new uses. Now, it can be used as it was originally designed, as a community center, a multipurpose center, or it can be adaptively reused. This is a phrase you see, we take the cotton mills and we turn them into condos, you see that down in the Piedmont lot. And many of the examples you've already seen is this example of adaptive reuse. Essentially, we'll go through the flow of a transaction. The jurisdiction, in this case, the county, sometimes it's a municipality, declares a property surplus. County manager will help you with that, will most likely abort resolution. I don't know if they have to pass an ordinance or not, but I'm pretty sure there's a public hearing involved with it. So you pass a resolution declaring it surplus, you enter into a private negotiation with us, with PNC. Instead of going through the public bidding process, as defined in General Statute two sixty-six. The county then sells the property to PNC, we use an option to purchase. So essentially, what we do is we sign an option with you, y'all give us an option at a pre-negotiated price. We find the next owner. At the, in the same day, we buy it from the county, we attach permanent and perpetual deed restrictions, protective covenants. protective covenants, that prevent demolition, that mandate maintenance, that mandate rehabilitation, that mandates some level of public access, whether it's owned by a private nonprofit, a public entity, or a private entrepreneur, there would still be some minimal public access requirement involved in that. And then we sell it to the new owner. PNC basically owns the property for five minutes. We demand an enforceable rehabilitation agreement with the buyer. Whoever we're selling the property to enters into a contract with Preservation North Carolina that allows us to mandate the rehab with a schedule. We can extend schedules in some, in, in some cases, depending on how the work is progressing. But we essentially become the owner's preservation staff, their consultant. They rely heavily upon us to help answer questions and techniques, archaic building construction types, and stuff like that. But we also enforce those protective covenants, we'll take them to court if they do wrong by them. We've done it about three times this year, we don't like to do it, but we've got a responsibility to protect these historic buildings regardless of who the owner is. We review and approve or deny proposed changes, including the initial rehab and any later proposed changes have to come through our office. As I see it, the county, if you want to go down this path, which I strongly suggest you should, especially with the public outcry and support for this building, I hope you're considering a vote to save the building. There's two options that the jurisdiction has, in my opinion. This is based on conversations with the community, based on conversations with your manager. We base, PNC would end, uh, would enter into a memorandum of understanding, or an MOU, with an appropriate nonprofit, you've heard from a pretty good fit already today, okay? Uh, we would, uh, make sure that that nonprofit had, shows the ability to follow through with the rehab and sustainable use of the building, that's a big. I don't want these things coming back to us. I don't want these old buildings to be the thirty-year-old living in the basement, right? I want them rehabbed and done and off into good service for the community. So that's your first, and the key there would be the appropriate nonprofit, of which I believe you've heard from a good candidate. The second option the jurisdiction has in this scenario is that we market to a broader public of private buyers, and we find an entrepreneur, we find a, perhaps even another nonprofit, or a partnership of nonprofits that would work together. Uh, it would still be subject to a rehab agreement, and it'd still be subject to a schedule for that rehab. And ultimately, we would put those protective covenants on the deed. Permanently preventing demolition, perpetually preventing demolition. What's the difference, permanent for that one owner's ownership, perpetual every owner from here on out. It goes with the title, not the owner, okay? We also hold a right of first refusal on any future sale. So when that building comes up for sale in the future, we can step in and buy it back, especially if we think somebody with ill intent, or somebody we're gonna have to sue, is gonna try to buy it. Or if there's somebody that made a good run at it, gave it a good college trial, but it failed, we have the option to step in with our right of first refusal and buy it back. So we, we've secured the future of that building, even if we have to do a do-over. Oops. That's what I got. Any questions? We'd love to answer any questions you have about our, about our success stories and how we work with other jurisdictions. If not, if I can approach the dice, I've got a little handout for y'all, shows you about our work, I've got one for everybody. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, we'll move right along, missed the note, if you wanna come to the front.
Just plug it in, if they can, plug it in.
Uh, do you have a USB thing to plug in?
Uh, my, I just, I tried it there at the brand.
Yeah, is this it? Do I just plug it in right here?
It's placed, so.
I was trying to get it.
I'm sorry. It's bringing forward, back, spin it around in your hand. One of the things that, so I did a lot of work in, in previous, I'm looking at banks and branches, um, utilizing them for some of these historic buildings, and there's some challenges with it sometimes, you know, security and all that, but a couple of times I was able to do that. Um, I would add it to, I'd add it, I would add it to your list. Um, I know they've all been very pleased, uh, afterward. Uh, Madam Chair, uh, gentlemen of the board, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk, uh, for a few minutes, um, today. Uh, I, I wanna start with a quick little, little story to kind of frame this up, to kind of help, to try to help you guys understand a little bit about, kind of my motivation, my vision, and how I'm looking through this. Um, about thirty-five years ago, um, I got a job with an antique store down in, um, Charlotte. A woman by the name of Mary Frances Miller, I'm assuming you may have known her, she's gonna play something banner out. Um, and she's about yay tall, shorter than my wife, and she used to call me Little Nathan. Um, and she used to tell me, she said, "Nathan, this job's gonna run you." I said, "Well, just like that." She said, "Well," she said, "you will never look at a pe, a new piece of furniture and an old piece of furniture the same." And, and, and I just said, "Thank you," and, you know, she was, she was old. Um, she's probably about my age now, and, you know, didn't want to disagree with her, I just thanked her for it, kind of moved, moved on. Uh, I would tell you, she was one hundred percent right. And we've come to our house, we have new stuff and all that, but there's a lot of old stuff there. Um, and when I look at that, I don't look at that as a we're an owner of it. We're a caretaker of this for the next generation. Um, and I wanna share that story very quickly, because that's kind of how, when I'm, we're talking about this, it's kind of how I think about this, and that's the lens, uh, that I'm looking through, um, with, with all of this. Um, the end, um, is committed, um, to preserving, um, the, the building. Ditto, ditto, e, everything that was said out there. It's a long and short history here at Avery, it's a part of our nation's history, some very dark days, um, very difficult days, uh, out there. Um, you know, the building has been brilliantly well utilized, I would love to see that light, I, I, it's fascinating, um, out there. And I wanna commend, and I, and I, I wanna say this, I want it huge. I wanna commend the commissioners, and I wanna commend the taxpayers and the citizens of Avery County because I believe they've done a brilliant job utilizing, maintaining that building for eighty-five years. The only reason we're here today having this discussion is because of your commitment and the commitment of the people of Avery County. And I don't want that to be lost on anybody. If that commitment, I've been there, we wouldn't be here today. Um, certainly it's owned by the, the county today, there's great things with that, there's liability, maintaining it, slip and fall, heaven forbid. I think the reason the que, but, but in the conversations that we've had and listening here, the question that's faced, the board is asked is, okay, well, what's the best operating model going forward? Yes, we've gotten here today for great eighty-five years, what is it, what's the model going forward? Um, the manager, uh, asked me to come and talk a little bit about my vision. Uh, I would say my vision is very similar to what I've just heard, kind of with North Carolina Preservation. Um, I absolutely passionately believe in restoring the building, original, age-appropriate design. Obviously, the front door is new, something needs to go back there, finding the original, finding a picture, um, out there with the windows, obviously not new, there are doors in there, there's win, there's doors that have been taken out, windows have been put in this place. There are doors that have been taken out, it's just been supported over. Um, again, I had consultants, I had contractors look at it, I had an architect come and look at it. Whether or not that that door will be moving or not will depend on the ultimate design. Um, but I can assure you, when you walk by it, it'll look like it's always been there, it'll look like it's an original building, whether or not it opens or not. But taking it back to what it was and what it was built, um, back in nineteen, um, thirty-nine, um, out there. Um, obviously, I mean, we're working through down the roof, um, the front porch, you know, that crack that's forming up there. Not filling it in, you know, put a bolt through it, tie it, cover it up so you don't see it, but to keep it from deteriorating. Again, this is about preserving this building, restoring and preserving the building for the next generation, the next multiple generations, the next eighty-five, hundred, um, years, um, out there. Um, but it wouldn't just be spending the money to a stuff that you would see. But again, if this is about preserving it, we can do all of that, but in five or ten years, we're gonna be right back where we are today. So it's doing those things, um, essential heat, air, so take care of the mold problem once it's out, then to keep it, you know, from coming back, uh, and stuff that you don't see, um, out there. Um, I had two contract, two consult, contractors, excuse me, um, and architect to look at it. Um, they all say, they all say the same thing. It's doable, it's worth preserving, and yes, what the board has told you is right. It is gonna be a six-figure experience, and it's not gonna be more. In order to get that building back up, I think going, very consistent out there, from what I've heard. Um, there's another thing, um, out there that I would just, okay, we've got the building preserved, now what do we do with it? Um, we, I, 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 I cannot tell you how blessed we've been in the last year and a half. Um, last summer, we were at eight, seventy-nine percent capacity for the summer, and we weren't even on Expedia or booking until October, excuse me, until August. Mo, January was our third highest month. We have one week, we have one night this weekend out of sixty, we have twenty rooms, out of sixty, we have one night available this weekend. Next weekend we're booked. People are calling, no, I just, no, no. We had five people that we had to use that end, and I hate that. Tell people, "No, we don't have, we don't have any space, we desperately need more space." And it's not just people who are, you know, coming to visit, but a lot of people that we have to tell, "No," they used to live up here, they're coming back for funerals, for weddings, for family reunions, we have to tell them, "No." And I would tell you, when we do that, very, very rarely do we tell, when they say, "Where else to go?", the county's full. And the only other place that usually has rooms available would be at least two hundred and fifty, I've seen them four hundred and seventy-five dollars now. They have variable pricing, and that's our customer, that's not our target, they're not, they're not gonna do it. So they're going a, a, out of the county, and they're having to turn it away. We desperately need more capacity, um, out there. Uh, I also look at this, you know, there's been, obviously there's a benefit, and this is part of kind of the county's vision, is to repay the county and the taxpayers for the investments they've done, acquiring the building out there, returning it to the tax register, um, um, property tax size. Um, you talked about our accommodating, yes, not having to turn it away to other counties, begin to get sales, you know, there'll be sales tax, um, in there on it. To kind of give you guys an o, an idea, we're probably talking four or five hotel rooms, um, i, in there. Um, we have twenty today, so it increases to twenty-five total. We would still be smallest in the county, we're still smaller than Dixie, much smaller, um, than, um, Pinola, um, out there. But it would provide additional capacity out there to help people, residents, guests, um, out there, um, in the county. Um, so we talk, I'm gonna put a red bow on this, um, changing the ability from a liability for the county, for the citizens, to a revenue-generating asset, um, out there. Restoring that money, restoring the building and maintaining it with private funds. Right, I would love, I would love, but I, I, that's not why I'm here. I think I've got, I've got a plan, and I'm confident that we use it all private funds, um, out there. And finally, to begin to generate a durable, uh, multi-revenue, multi-stream source of revenue for the county. Again, preserving the building for the next generations, and providing, uh, and providing a return and a thank you for the investment that county, commission, the citizens of the county have done, invested in that building, um, for eighty-five years. Those are my prepared comments, and a lot of me talking, I agree, I, I do it over the floor. Are there any questions or comments that I can answer today? Um, I, I, one last thought. Um, thank you for the opportunity to come here. And I appreciate us being able to come to have the ability to talk about this, and considering saving you the order. Um, I'm a little biased, I'm number three, that have been there today, but I would also say this. Yeah, I, I have a, a hope in which one, and one that I want you to, but I appreciate you listening. And if it's not me, I'm comfortable, and I'm great for, I'm great with these other two decisions. But I appreciate, I appreciate you listening and giving us a couple of minutes to talk today.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Francis, do you want?
I don't really have anything else to add, other than my number one is the Preservation, Preservation Committee, the thing with the museum, Historical Society, that would be my number one. Because I would like to see it be used for, by the community. I mean, I understand what Nathan's saying, we do need more tax revenue, we need more tax revenue for new ones. I mean, we do, we're having, you know, I live in Illinois, you know, and when you don't have a lot of property to sell, it makes your taxes go up, you know, there's no, you know, it does, it's a fact of life. But I would like to see the building restored, I would like to see us, if we can, to get a grant from the state with some of their three billion surplus dollars. We talked about it at that meeting with Philip and William, um, Tim. And I would just really like to see the building saved for the historicals. And that's just about all I have to say, except happy birthday, Martha.
Alright.
Ms. Martha, I may, I want to just make everyone in the room aware of something. I may have misspoke at the last time when we met at the fire department. So I do have the asbestos report in the agenda today, and yes, there is asbestos. The good news is, it's only around the casings of the windows.
It's not in the floor?
No, so if we tear down the building, if you tear down the building, that will have to be took care of. If you remodel the building, then there's steps in here, you know, what to do with the EPA to, to facilitate that. But on the, the black mold is where I think was misunderstood. If we demolish the building, the black mold does not have to be dealt with. But if you re-inhabit the building, if something else goes in the building, then yes, there is black mold. Um, so there's no special removal procedures if the building is, you know, torn down. But it will need to be addressed if somebody occupies.
I thought you said there wasn't any black mold.
No, it doesn't have to be dealt with, with the EPA, if you do, if the building is torn down. Okay, just wanted to make that clarification.
But it can be dealt with.
It can be dealt with if you wanna, I'm sure that Preservation North Carolina sees a lot. Deals with a lot of mold, and probably asbestos too.
That's why I act so funny.
Okay.
Alright, usually after we get through with comments, a lot of people leave. But I do want to tell you, you can pick up this magazine, and I want to thank Tim Gardner. He wrote a article about me being chair, and I've been here fifteen years. And I've enjoyed it, maybe everything didn't go as I wanted it to, but as a board, we work together, and that's what our motto says. And I do thank each and every one. But if you want one of the magazines, see Tim, and he'll be glad to give you one. It was a, a good article, but a lot more than I thought this was gonna be. But we'll move right along to our Tax Administration Report, Andrea Turpitt.
Please approve our collections for the month of March, April. A hundred and sixty-eight thousand, hundred and seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Move to print.
All in favor, raise your hands. Alright. And then our leases for the month were five hundred and fourteen dollars and nineteen cents.
Move to print.
All in favor, raise your hands.
Okay. Okay, I've got a, I hope this is in my order, but my memo for our, um, amount of taxes past due, I missed it on my calendar. I missed it on my calendar, I should have presented that in February, so I'm a couple of months late. Um, our taxes past due for the 2022 tax year are four hundred and twenty thousand, fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents. And I'd just like for y'all to approve that, so I can go ahead and advertise.
We can approve.
I hear a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
And then to this date, our collection rate is at ninety-eight percent. Our Board of Equalization and Review, as of today, has heard all of our appeals so far. They will stay open until May eighth at three P M. Then after that, we should close, and everything should be done. I do have one outstanding appeal, but I'm going to have a meeting with Michelle tomorrow on a couple of things, and ask her about that one. Um, also, I wanted to include in your packet the, the statewide sales ratio. I just thought that would be interesting information for y'all to see, how things are kind of going in the state, and as far as when you have revaluation, what your ratios are, and how quick they drop right now.
Look, looking at that, that, uh, numbers that's on here, at what point in time is that? Is that at the, at the point of revaluation, or?
That is the first full year, that's not at the point of revaluation for us. This is for 2023, basically, for the fiscal year. The fiscal year, yes.
Okay.
So that's showing our decrease. Um, then our revaluation sales, our sales for April were fifty-one sales, and you can tell, last year we had seventy-four sales. Our ratio of theirs is at sixty-one percent. So it's still, people are still selling their, their properties for more than what we had them on the tax books for. And we are working on our revaluation, and I've got some really sharp people that are going through things with their fine-toothed comb, and weighing some stuff out for us, and I really appreciate that.
If you don't mind, I want to make one comment on the great job that they did on the revaluation. If you'll go back to that reevaluation page, and you look at the counties that did their reav- revaluation in 2022, which includes Watauga. And y'all know what's happening in Avery and Watauga. So we're back at seventy-one percent, Watauga's at seventy-six. So that shows, you know, that we're right there, you know, five percent off of what our neighbors are doing, the way things are selling. Things are selling for more in Avery and Watauga County. Uh, Ash County just did their reappraisal, and, uh, had someone talk to me in Wilkes-Barre about that this weekend, uh, a little bit upset over their value. And I asked them how many square feet they had on their house, and asked them if they took care of it, and if it was depreciated out, did the math. And I said, if it's not on for this, it's not enough, and he kept his mouth shut, so I think he'll be okay. So, uh, the High Country is, uh, the place to be right now. So, um, you know, that Board of Realtors, um, are busy, and, uh, so that reflects, you know, that both of those counties failed, that, you know, harder than any of the other counties that did a twenty-twenty-two rebuild. So, good job.
Thank you. And also, I just threw in here, I wanted you to see this, this was kind of a last-minute thing. Um, to take a look at a proposed bill change, it kind of made me nervous when I got information from the Department of Revenue that a portion of the bill would exempt the personal property tax that we charge on Airbnb, short-term rentals, that kind of stuff. We have twenty-one million, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars in taxable personal, household personal property that we would lose if this bill passes. Um, I did get another email from somebody that said that they're pushing it back a year. So, but that's something that if y'all can kind of reach out and just be aware that that's coming. Um, because they would, I think, that's eighty-seven thousand dollars for us that we, uh, we need, we need that.
We don't need to lose it.
And that's a lot of business in this county, there's a lot of personal.
And I'll get those, that, uh, uh, value is, uh, for the most part, based on a, a ratio, correct, rather than a stated amount?
Right, right, we do, we, we allow you to either itemize, which means giving us a historical cost, what you paid for it brand-new, how old it is, then we depreciate it with a schedule for business personal property. Or you can choose to do six percent of the value of your structure to cover that, take the easy route out. And, uh, and we get that a lot, so we, we use the six percent a lot.
So that's, that second choice is prime, is the primary means by which that's arrived at?
Yes, I mean, we have people that do want to list, itemize, but it's generally a new house, and they know everything. They're not buying an older home and having to guess at everything, because, you know, we, we have to have that historical cost.
Or is it, I'm asking, we have a conversation with legislators or whatever, just for we sure that we're presenting the, the correct facts to them?
Right, and that's our estimate on what it would cost to furnish a house just across the board. We could possibly do some more research and, and gauge it per square foot. But the bigger the house, the bigger the amount, so it kind of balances out.
Thank you. And your association does know that all the county managers are against this deal, yeah, okay, so.
There's another part of this bill, too, as far as business personal property, once you list it, that you don't ever have to list it again. So it's just kind of a leaving the tax office at a quandary, as to, are you still in business? Aren't you still in business? What do you have? Do you have anything new? And so it kind of is, is tying our hands for a lot of things, so I don't feel like this is a, a, a great bill. Just my opinion.
We're going to Raleigh this month, and we will let them know.
Thank you.
Avery said no.
Yeah, tell them I said no. I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, we'll move right along to our county manager's report, three point four A.
Well, it's been a busy month since we met last, uh, budget is one thing, and, uh, I know y'all tired of seeing me and hearing, hearing from me, and me forwarding emails. Uh, just quickly, the D S S construction, despite the, uh, supply issues, and despite hitting some, uh, wet weather springs, um, our contractor still has a timeline of November twenty-seventh, so we will keep posted, okay? Uh, we were just out there, and you see that the footers are being dug today, and if y'all noticed, did you notice how many people were there on that little project? And we built a bigger project, and you couldn't find nobody? You know, you had a truck sitting there, and two different groups working as hard as they could on this project. So just saying, I think we got the right contract.
They even moved our dirt when we was going to go over and.
Didn't have time to pull with this.
Break ground, they moved the dirt, took it away from us, says on the ballot.
Exactly. Um, on Mon- last Monday, the twenty-fourth, we had our opioid public input session. Uh, I want to thank Sarah Price again with High Country Cog. Um, what came out of that meeting was the group, the public input was, we would go with the option A, bring that to you all as the commissioners, and con- and concentrate on what we can do for prevention and what we can do rehab. So, uh, drug crisis roundtable meets again Monday at eleven, and, uh, hopefully, we will then be ready to have our next public input session. So what happens is, after those public input sessions, from that session, we will bring, hopefully bring you all some resolutions to consider on the spending of the opioid settlement. Any questions on that? And if you can be part of either of those groups, uh, I thank you for your time, pays the same, sorry, Jim.
Sorry.
Uh, Freedom Life opened their doors April seventeenth, so like I said, April's been a great month. Um, and they've had eleven appointments for assessment so far, uh, through the month, so I applaud them on their efforts. We had our housing needs assessment to, open to the public, um, again, thanks to Dogwood and Bowen and High Country Council of Governments. Uh, we're going to roll up our sleeves, go to Raleigh, and see what they can allow us to do to, uh, help with our, um, housing, especially in the form of workforce helping. Uh, bids were also accepted, we had to do it twice on our community development block grant for our foreign replacement homes for this cycle. Uh, we do have a successful bidder, and Todd Hefner is over that, and he is moving forward with that. Internet broadband, uh, the great grant was signed, month of April. County Exhibit J was turned in, um, so thanks to you all pledging the American Rescue Plan money toward broadband. We took a hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and five dollars and fifty cents, pledged it toward a grant, spectrum charter communications. Were successful in that grant, we turned that two-hundred-thousand dollars into two-million, six forty-six, seven forty. This is to help twelve businesses and two-hundred-and-twenty-two households in Avery County. We, the board, we, the government, can't control where the, the two-hundred-and-twenty-two households are, they have them on a map. I do not have addresses, so I really can't tell you who's going to be served by this grant. It does fill, it, it, it's across the county, and it does fill in a lot of the gaps. You know, where one side of the road is served, and the other sides are not. So, uh, I thought that was, I know we've waited a long time, and, uh, seems like it's took forever, but, um, taking two-hundred-thousand dollars and turning it into the two-point-six is pretty good return on your money. And just wanted another shout-out publicly to the Dogwood Trust. Uh, Troy Quick was successful in receiving a grant, and it'll be in, uh, Cables' report here in just a minute, for the Crave and Wave computer system that had to go in the courtroom. So that's, again, taxpayer money, we don't have to spend on that update, because Troy and Dogwood, uh, gave us a grant. Troy went after the grant, and Dogwood approved it, and I signed it today, so, um, for that. So, uh, just appreciate everything that Dogwood Trust does for us. Last Friday, I went to a meeting with the Blue Ridge Rising, it's about the Blue Ridge Parkway, and the improvements that need to be done, and the economic impact that it has on the eighteen counties in which Parkway touches from North Carolina to Virginia. So, um, I'll keep you posted on that as those meetings, uh, keep going, and I'll forward emails when we get minutes from those meetings. Any other questions for me? All right, Matt and Karen.
Three point four B, our finance officer, Caleb Oden.
I have just four items for your consideration today. I'll have more next month, I'm sure, so finish up the year. Uh, the first one, the Department of Social Services has received an additional three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two-dollar allocation for the Crisis Intervention Program. There is no county match for this. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit Crisis Intervention, three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, and to credit County Welfare, three thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Thank you, board. Item number two, the Avery County Sheriff's Office has received a check for three thousand dollars from the Drug Abuse Resolution Team, also known as D R T, to help fund the expense of the replacement of a future K-9 dog. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit drug fund expenses, three thousand dollars, and to credit donations, three thousand dollars.
Move to adopt.
I hear a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Item number three, as, uh, Philip mentioned, the county has received a grant from Dogwood Health Trust that helped fund the Crave and Wave projects. These projects have made various telecommunication modifications to both the large and small courtrooms as required by the court system. Request the board to approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay, court facilities, twenty-five thousand dollars, and to credit Dogwood Health Trust grant, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
And the last item, the Veterans Office is asking for funding to add more names to the Veterans Memorial for various wars, including the Civil War. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit repairs, maintenance, equipment, eleven thousand dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, eleven thousand dollars.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
And that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Mr. President.
How soon will they be able to do the names?
Uh, we've got the proposal, and Dawn told them that I had, we had to get this approved today, so I think they're planning on coming. They know that we would love to have them up before our memorial day, so.
I was hoping they would not.
Two-hundred-and-seventy-nine names, and two headers, so.
My God.
We didn't have fifty names, we didn't have, we didn't have fifty names together last year, so. It'd be a great, uh, addition.
Yes, it would. All right, we'll move right along, three point four C, our attorney, Michelle Ford.
Uh, the only thing that I have that requires the board's attention today is the addition, uh, to the agenda consent items, uh, the order that was entered, uh, for the Board of Adjustments Hearing, uh, which the Board of Commissioners sent us.
Do I hear a motion?
We'll get to that in a couple more items.
Make a motion, will you, add those to the agenda consent items?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, we'll move right along, if that's all Michelle has, we did thank Michelle for what she does for our county. Three point five, staff reports and requests, do you have anything there?
We do not.
Three point six, closed session, Michelle.
I do not have anything that requires the board's attention today.
Okay. I lost my place, I lost my glasses.
Your purple hands.
Okay, all right, three point seven, approval of the amendments. We have February the twenty-second, two thousand, twenty-three, board workshop. February the twenty-second, two thousand, twenty-three, closed session. April the third, twenty, twenty-three, regular session. Do I hear a motion to approve the amendments?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All right, three point eight, we have our agenda consent items, and we have something to add to that.
We just did it.
Okay, all right, so we've already got it in.
It just needs to be approved with the other consent items.
All right, does anybody have any questions or anything about our consent item? If not, they'll be approved by consent. Three point nine, our informational items. Do you want to tell anything about our informational?
Mark a calendar for the twenty-ninth at two o'clock for a memorial day celebration. Vaya has sent out another letter about the child protective services going through the, with the state, or, uh, those services, so I just wanted you to see that. D R T did give Freedom Life a donation, so that's in there, so we thank them for that. You do have a public comment period for some flood, flood plain mapping programs with FEMA, but this is not final, so they will send a map with those, but I just wanted y'all to be aware of that, and that's.
And if someone is here that don't know where our office is for Freedom Life, or want to go see it, you're more than welcome, it's out at, you want to tell it, Philip?
At the Whammy Building.
At the Whammy Building.
Where, where the chiropractor's office was at.
And it really looks nice, they went around, and we gave them some chairs and stuff. They've went around and we've gave them some chairs and stuff and thankful for that. All right, upcoming meetings. Cindy, you want to tell us what we're supposed to do for the next?
Thursday, May the fourth, we have a budget workshop starts at five o'clock. We'll do Fire Commission at five, Sheriff at six, and Board of Education at seven. May the eleventh, we have a budget workshop starts at one o'clock. And then May the fifteenth, we have a regular meeting scheduled. If we need another meeting for budget, we can do that or we can cancel the, that second meeting in May. So when we get a little closer, we'll decide.
The goal is to present the budget at the June fifth meeting.
Lot of work to do in the budget. If you don't, and never say it in on it, you're more than welcome. All right. If that is all, do I hear that we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, may it go home.
All in favor, it's right.
Yeah.
If anybody wants to bake a stack.
Yeah.
And if anybody wants to bake a pan of biscuits, make some strawberry jam. This is scarring me to death looking at that. Look at that.
First thought of pitcher.
I'm waiting for John to bring up himself to honor to me.